Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's evening, excuse me, meeting of the Board of Selectmen, January 24, 2022. We will start with roll call, please. Judy O’Connell here.
Garry DePalma here.
Greg Bendel here.
Lilly Maselli here. Before we start, I do want to reiterate our deepest sympathies to the family, friends of Roberta Sossville, who lived here in Wilmington for your tragic loss. It’s an incident that never should have happened. Before we continue, I would like to ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then I would like you to remain standing for a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In light of the tragic circumstances that took place on Friday evening that declained the life of Wilmington resident Roberta Sossville Divine, I would like to take the new business section of our agenda and bring it up to the present moment in relation to this topic of the accident only. If any member of the Board has another new business topic, we will take it at the end of the meeting as usual. I will now open the discussion on new business as it pertains to the accident, and I’m going to open it up to my Board members first, and I will conclude it at the end. So can we start with you, Selectman O’Connell?
Yes, thank you. First and foremost, I would like to also extend my deepest sympathies to the Sossville Divine family of Wilmington. I am at a loss for words as to how to succinctly address this to the public. This was a definite tragedy. I wanted to acknowledge this very kind woman. I did not have the pleasure of knowing her personally, but there were a lot of comments that were written as to just what a lovely human being she has been for 68 years, a loving family with children, a husband that has passed but had a certain legacy here in Wilmington, right around the corner from where this incident happened. I wanted to thank the first responders that came on site to help this woman during this time. I know these tragedies are difficult for everybody that’s involved. I appreciate the chiefs for fire and police getting in touch with Jeff and Jeff getting in touch with us. I appreciate the work that was done over the weekend on Saturday in working with a legislative delegation who is here this evening. I appreciate the fact, I know many members of the Board wanted a statement to go out publicly expressing our sympathy and the fact that we wanted some investigative information provided to us and some updates as to what occurred. I do know everything is preliminary at this point. I’m not going to speculate on that. I do understand, as an update, as a member of the Board, and also as the representative for the MBTA Advisory Board, which I am, that there was a comprehensive conference call with Senator Bruce Tar, with David Robertson, as well as members from MBTA and from, I believe, Keolis, if you can correct me on that. And it was my understanding that they were going to be taking some time over the weekend to make sure that the safety protocols were back in place. I do want to share that I physically went to that location on more than one occasion yesterday, and I want to share how upset I was over the fact that I was the only person there at 11:03 later on in the day between 1:00 and 2:00 o’clock. And then I went back at quarter past 5:00 to be there, present for the 5:38 train, and there was not a single representative from the MBTA or Keolis that I could see. And it was less than 48 hours after this tragedy, and there wasn’t a single person there other than myself and news crew. So I want to express that I think that’s an unacceptable response. I understand that this is a tragedy and that, you know, it’s unspeakable what occurred. I believe it could have been preventable based on the information that’s been provided. But I’m very dissatisfied with the response that the town received just less than 48 hours from that. I will say, as a member of the MBTA Advisory Committee, as a side note, we have not had one single meeting since I have been on this Board. So I don’t know, you know, the reasons why, but I would like to just convey publicly that I would like us to be consistent, persistent, and relentless in our pursuit of information with regards to what occurred, also what safety protocol is in place now and in the future, such that this should never happen again. And also, too, you know, the one major question is, you know, what redundancies are in place? What cross-check was in place? How, you know, human error was able to take place allegedly, such that there was no cross-check to make sure that another human being made sure that these safety systems were back in place? With software and where we are in 2022, I just can’t just say that this is an unspeakable tragedy and then just move on from here without some follow-up. So I’d like to close my comments here and just say that I read about all of the wonderful things that this woman has achieved in her life. She definitely will be missed by those that knew her and loved her, and as a member of this community, not as an elected official, I mourn for the loss of a beloved resident here in town, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak on this.
Thank you. I am going to just jump in here, just Judy, just because you brought up some points, I think it’s fair, it’ll help if I just give you a little, everybody, a little summary of our discussion. So on Saturday, the 22nd, I did participate in a Zoom call with Senator Bruce Tar, who is here this evening, Representative Dave Robertson, Town Manager Hull, John Lenacek from Massioti, and Angel Donahue Rodriguez from the MBTA. At that time, we were advised that there was going to be, that there was an ongoing investigation that would take considerable time, could even be months. A signal maintainer was at the location of the crossing prior to the incident, as we have all read. These individuals are typically engaged in routine maintenance and inspection, so they’re often there, and that is why that person was there, it was a routine inspection. A representative would be present in the bungalow for the next 24 hours, which is what Selectman O’Connell was just speaking to, and I believe Jeff has a comment on that, so I’ll defer to him in a moment. There were speed restrictions on the rail at the time of our conversation at about 4:00 on Saturday. We did formally request that a presence from the MBTA be present for this week. At a minimum, we were asking at least Monday through Wednesday, just because, obviously, people would start back to school, work, and we felt it would give our community and the residents, and even people who go there that are not Wilmington residents, a little more comfort knowing that there was somebody there, a presence, you know, seeing somebody out there monitoring it. And he, Mr. Rodriguez, could not grant the request at that time, as he needed to consult with others and get back to us, and he did not get back to us on that, unfortunately, which is disappointing. And we are supposed to get an update from Mr. Rodriguez and the team on, later this week. We did not have a representative from Keolis on that, on that call. You know, we may not have authority to direct any specific actions at that location, but we have a responsibility to hold the MBTA accountable, to ensure that this crossing and all MBTA crossings everywhere in Wilmington and otherwise are safe for our residents and anybody who travels over them. You know, this was a horrible incident and cannot be allowed to happen anywhere again, here or within the system. I did, prior to this meeting, maybe an hour ago, Steve Poftak, who’s the general manager of the MBTA, called me, and we had a conversation about, he sent his condolences and all that. But I think it was a conversation that went in the right direction. He did assure me that that crossing station, the arms, the signals are working 100%, that they’re safe. And as we all know, they are, as you read in the papers, they do believe it was human error. They are still investigating that, of course. And I did just read, I don’t know if you were aware, just recently, that that operator or dispatcher is put on leave. As my question to him was corrective action, you know, how, what are they going to do? What are they going to put in place to make sure that this doesn’t happen anywhere else again? And he told me that they were already working on that, there were a few steps into it. You know, he, this goes to your question, Judy, he said, you know, what do they do to make sure that things are checked before that person is finished? He said, as laypeople, you know, if you go in there, you know, you can, you can tell if it’s engaged or not. So, you know, there’s training. And he actually had mentioned, you know, perhaps it’s, it’s the person that’s working there when they, you know, get off, maybe they have to talk to another person. So this is just all speculative, but I was glad to hear that they had some iteration of ideas going around, and they’re working this with the MBTA, with Keolis, to make sure and ensure that this doesn’t happen. He told me we would keep an open communication. As he had updates, he would let me know, and I can reach to him as well with questions. So I did appreciate the call, and it made me feel, you know, a little better that they were already working on this and were not saying, you know, what are you going to do? And he didn’t kind of have an answer. He did have an answer. So I think you got it right, Judy, in the actions. It seems to be kind of what you said is what he actually told me. So I think you were on the path to what they’re on the path. It’s inexcusable. You know, it’s, it’s a tragedy, it’s horrific, and to hear that it was human error, just when you think it couldn’t get worse, I think it made it worse, you know? And since, I’ll just wrap up my speech, so you don’t have to hear me talk again at the end, but I do obviously want to give my condolences to Ms. Sossman Divine’s family and friends. You know, this, this, I didn’t know she actually lived kind of the, she lived a street behind me, and I would drive, I’d drive by her house all the time, and I just, I didn’t know her personally. A lot of my neighbors did. I read the same article, and she seemed like a lovely woman, and I, the only memory I do have of her, a couple of years ago, she shingled her whole house by herself, and I thought it was amazing, and I looked forward to seeing it, and the house was beautiful. So I’m very saddened, like everybody else, and, you know, no one should have to worry about driving over railroad track, you know? The light should go on, the arms should come down, we stop, and the train goes by, and we go on with our day. But we will continue to follow up with the MBTA and Massioti, Keolis, as the investigation continues, and we will continue to push to get the answers that we demand to make sure that this doesn’t happen again. I will just defer to Jeff, because I think you can answer Judy’s question, or speak to Judy’s question about the, the
Coverage.
Coverage at the station on Sunday, just in relation to what Mr. Rodriguez had sent you.
So he did indicate, Mr. Rodriguez, that is, that they were expecting to have coverage 48 hours from the date of the incident on Friday evening, which suggests, although it’s not clear to me, that there may have been someone there on Sunday, but again, I wasn’t over there, it sounds like, from what Selectman O’Connor, O’Connell is saying, that there wasn’t. Clearly, when we had this conversation at 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, my understanding was that, at the least, there would be a presence there 24 hours from that point, which would have taken the better part of that Sunday. As was noted earlier, we were pushing to have a presence there at the beginning of the week on the premise that there’s far more traffic running through that stretch during the weekday than there is on a Sunday. We’re waiting to hear whether, there has not been a response to that request to date.
Thank you. Selectman DePalma, would you like to go next?
Thank you. My condolences to the family and friends. It is a tragedy. Unfortunately, accidents do happen. Let’s not pass judgment on this employee yet until we know exactly what happened. I am disheartened, though, by the response from the MBTA and Keolis regarding coverage. It’s, it wasn’t so much that you were concerned if the arms were going to go up and down, but it was just, as you’re driving by, you see someone there, you know there’s someone watching this, just comfort for the community. And again, I think the MBTA and Keolis has failed in their, their support of the community. It’s something I believe that should be rectified. I want to thank all those that were involved in the phone call on Saturday. Our State House delegation responded rapidly to the request of the town. And again, I just, my condolences, and I feel that the MBTA and Keolis has some explaining to do, why they couldn’t bring someone in there and let them sit there for a few days so that, as you’re driving by, knowing that something just happened, you’re not in fear or concerned about what is happening at that time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Selectman Bendel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, too, want to extend my deepest condolences to the Sossville and Divine family, an absolute tragedy, and by all indications, it sounds like it could have possibly been prevented. So I know that the family has questions. We share those questions, some of them you’ve heard already tonight. We look forward to getting answers for that family. And obviously, all of us up here, our number one priority is to make sure that Wilmington is a safe place for residents, and those who travel through Wilmington can feel safe, too. So I hope that the MBTA will share our concern and know that safety is our number one priority, and we want to make sure that people feel comfortable crossing over at this location, in any location, for that matter. Just as another port of reference, I, too, visited the site at approximately 2:30 on Sunday. I was the only one who had stopped by when I, when I was there for that brief time. But again, this is an absolute tragedy, and my thoughts and prayers go out to her family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Selectman Kira.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, my colleagues have eloquently expressed how we’re all feeling and that of the community. I’d like to extend my sincerest condolences to the family and friends of Roberta, and really emphasize the importance of, to the MBTA, how this community wants to feel safe, and it should be their top priority at this point, moving forward. This should, this tragedy should never have happened, and, and they need to make sure it never happens again. Once again, my sincerest condolences.
Thank you. Mr. Hull?
I think most of it has been said, certainly my condolences as well, to Ms. Sossville and her family and friends. You know, this is the kind of circumstance, you know, until now, quite frankly, I would never give a second thought to crossing a set of railroad tracks if the gates are up and the lights are off. You just presume that, that you’re safe in doing that. So the thought that someone just going about their daily business could be struck by a train is just, it’s really jarring. And I can understand why the community is shaken by this and hesitant about crossing tracks. And we have a number of crossings in Wilmington, and, you know, I think one of the challenges, quite frankly, is, is how the MBTA is able to restore a measure of confidence, not only here, but in any community with crossings, that they have procedures in place, a check and balance system, to make sure that, you know, if someone, through whatever, fails to reset the safety systems, that that is picked up, and that those safety systems are regularly and meticulously checked on some kind of a regular basis. I mean, this, this is just so unfortunate that this poor woman had this kind of a circumstance. It should never happen, and it, it should never happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Senator Tar, do you want to speak now? Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for being here, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And to you, to the members of, Madam Chair, with your indulgence, Representative Robertson could not be with us tonight. However, I do have him on my cellphone, and I’m going to attempt to engage a little bit of awkward technology here and, and join him in our conversation. He has, in fact, been listening.
Okay, great.
But I want to say that the entire legislative delegation appreciates the opportunity to be represented here tonight and be part of this discussion with you. I also want to say that the legislative delegation shares in our feeling of tragedy and expresses our condolences to the family of Ms. Sossville Divine and to the entire community. And we not only share in the feeling of grief, but we also share in the feeling of commitment that this Board and this Town Manager has to ensuring that this situation is properly responded to. We appreciated the outreach by the Town Manager over the weekend. We promptly convened a call, which you were able to participate in, and we intend to continue to make those lines of communication open so that we can all address this issue together with a common understanding and a common sense of purpose and a common sense of resolve that this situation will be properly addressed. In fact, the legislative delegation this afternoon, in conversations with General Manager Poftak, also requested that he be in contact with you, which I understand that subsequently he was.
Yep, thank you.
We agree, as a legislative delegation, that this is an unthinkable tragedy, and what makes it the most difficult to accept is the fact that it appears to, from the preliminary results of the investigation, have resulted from a simple failure to turn the safety system back on after a routine maintenance activity was performed by a signal maintainer. That is a very difficult reality for any of us to deal with, and it’s not something that we will accept on an ongoing basis. Now, in my experience, having been in state government for a number of years, it’s unusual to see the results of an investigation released in the preliminary fashion that they were. And that makes this situation even more haunting as we understand what appears to have happened here. That being said, I do think it is important, and I believe the legislative delegation feels it’s important, to let the investigative process continue and to rely on its results prior to thinking about long-term resolutions and sanctions. Of course, we’re all human. We want to think about how we can bring about proper accountability here and how we can bring about proper remedial action, but we would do those goals a disservice if we didn’t wait for all the facts to be present in our hands. There is currently an investigation that’s being conducted by the MBTA Police and the Massachusetts State Police and the Office of District Attorney Marion Ryan. They are competent investigators, and we await the results of their full investigation and complete presentation of the facts. That being said, the most imminent situation that we face is one that the Town Manager and you, Madam Chair, and other members of the Board have already suggested, is that we need to ensure that this grade crossing is safe now. And so we joined with you in the call on Saturday in requesting that there be personnel in place, either from MBTA or Keolis, to ensure that that would be the case. While we have been assured, as you have been assured, that the systems are operating appropriately, we once again reiterated the request this afternoon for a presence to be at that location. We were given assurances that somebody was, in fact, at that location over the weekend, as we had discussed on the phone. Again, we have firsthand observations that that may not have been the case, and that’s deeply concerning, and that’s something that we plan to address in a follow-up call that we will organize for later in this week. I would say that grade crossings are inherently something that we need to be concerned about because they hold the potential of an interaction between a pedestrian or a motor vehicle and a train. And this particular grade crossing is of concern because it’s in a quiet zone, and so we rely on the gates as really a singular means with their visual signal that a train is coming, and that’s why we need to be particularly concerned here. And that concern extends not only from the station at North Wilmington, but it extends throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as these inspections and these maintenance projects are being done every day. And so that’s why we are committed, number one, to make sure that the situation here now is safe, but also building in the right procedures for the future, forever, to make sure that this kind of mistake, this kind of human error, doesn’t cause a tragedy. And we have ideas for that, we’ve already begun discussing those, as many of you have, and we need to continue those discussions. And if there’s one message I could deliver for you here tonight, is that the legislative delegation stands in firm resolve with you to be able to pursue these resolutions for safety, again, not only here, but systemically throughout the MBTA system. Lastly, I would join with all of you in thanking our first responders, who once again, in a time of need, responded to the scene and did everything possible to address the conditions that were present. Sadly, we’ve lost a life here, but we all have a deep moral obligation to make sure that we do everything within our power, as has been said, to make sure it never happens We are committed to doing that, and we look forward to working with you. And as I mentioned, we will, in fact, convene a call for later in this week, once again. And, Madam Chair, having said that, I believe Representative Robertson may want to add some thoughts, with your permission.
Yes, please.
If I can make this device work properly. So Representative, can you hear me?
Yes, I’m here. Can they hear me?
Yes, we can.
We can.
I apologize. If you need to speak up, please let me know. I’m, I’m just playing it safe. I have a bit of sore throat, have been losing a bit of a voice and cough, so I’m just erring on the side of caution this evening. But I just want to join with Senator Tar first, saying thank you, especially to our Chief of Police. When I was first told it was happened, the chief had, had some very strong preliminary reports early on, which the next day allowed the Town Manager, Chairman Maselli, and Senator Tar and I to engage with the MBTA. So obviously, with the focus on loss of life here, it seems like we’re going towards human error, but as the Senator said, it’s about rebuilding the community trust here and revisiting not just the maintenance requirements, but the oversight of the maintenance requirements here. Earlier today, I, after speaking further with the MBTA, delved into the FRA, which is the Federal Railroad Authority, and their CFRs, the consolidated federal regulations. And I found within subsection 234, and I’m happy to forward the chapters and verses of each, but some of the inspection timelines, for example, energy buses, which are used for, in the tripping, are once a month, every three months, and what have you. So I know later this week, as Senator Tar said when we joined in the, in the phone call, this is all federally regulated, so we’ll have a discussion there, along with Madam Chair and the Town Manager, perhaps also folding in the federal delegation here to do so. But as for the moment, I think Senator Tar was absolutely correct in the fact that we’ve had a lot of issues with gates tripping on the Wildcat Line. And in fact, I know, I talked to the Senator back in June, and him and I let Chief Desmond and Town Manager Hull know on June 5th, I was coming back from a, well, I won’t dare call it a run, it was more of a accelerated walk, but about 11:00 that night, I spent some time talking with the MBTA Police and our own Wilmington Police. When the gate there was stuck up, I live right there, it happens fairly often, and that was an equipment issue. Now we’re having issues further up the line, where we already know that train station and the operating procedure for that contributed to the loss of life before, when Wilmington Fire was delayed in responding to a gentleman who had had a medical issue. So I think this week, with, with the phone call and the follow-up here, we’ll be able to, to ensure a new proper policy, which will not prohibit traffic, but also ensure the safety of the crossing grade there. And as, as the Senator quoted much more eloquently than I did, it’s an absolute tragic loss of life, but going forward, the best thing that we can do is ensure that it doesn’t happen again. And we’re fortunate to have two train stations here in town. It’s a great benefit, but we need those to function properly, efficiently, and safely. So we will certainly keep on it, and, like I said, I’ve begun digging up some concrete information responding to the Town Manager’s questionnaire, which I’m sure came from members of the community and the Board, and I should have a bit more concrete on that in a bit. So again, please pardon me doing this over the phone. Thank you, Senator Tar, for working me with on this. I’m just trying to play it safe as I'm just trying to play it safe as possible here and respond to the inquiries.
Representative, we appreciate your respect for public health and setting a good example tonight by doing this remotely, and I want to say that I'm somewhat relieved that I was able to facilitate your inclusion in the conversation. The representative referenced questions, and I would express gratitude to the town manager, who combined a number of questions, composed them, and sent them to us in an email. We are seeking answers to these. Again, we won't have answers this evening, but these are just a few of the questions that we hope that we can get answers to. Again, with the idea here that we have two main goals, ensuring safety now and ensuring systemic change so that we can always be assured that these grade crossings are safe, particularly given the inherent possibility that is here for an interaction between the train and either a pedestrian or a motorist.
Great, thank you, Senator Tarr. I would like to offer the board, if they want to add any comments.
Just one thing, Madam Chair. When you're having a meeting coming up this week, if our MBTA representative is Selectman O'Connell could be invited to that, if she's available, I would suggest that she take part in that, in those meetings going forward.
Thank you for that request and suggestion, and as long as we do not violate any quorum requirements or public meeting requirements, that is something that we would welcome. And I should say that we do welcome the interest and the participation of Selectman O'Connell. And I personally, I won't speak for the delegation because I haven't discussed it with them, but I regret the fact that greater opportunity hasn't been provided for her to be able to interact with the board and have a greater voice in the process, not through any fault of hers, but through a fault of the process itself. And I would note that this is also because reference was made to her and her interest, that this particular train station is one that has presented safety issues in the past. And we have worked collaboratively to try to address the issue of the train stopping in the middle of the road and causing a delay in emergency response. And we are also looking forward to an update later this week and where we stand with that, because you may recall that we had agreed upon a design to relocate the platform so that the train does not stop in the middle of the road. We had identified funding. We had secured proper permitting from the FRA, who governs the situation, as Representative Robertson alluded to. So as part of this discussion, we hope to get assurances that that project will, in fact, be completed, because this is not a situation where we want to continue to have to revisit the North Wilmington Train Station due to public safety issues. We want those issues resolved, and we want them resolved with finality so that we can all be assured that people can safely transit the area.
Agreed. Any further comments from the board? Thank you, Senator Tarr. I really appreciate it. Mr. Hall, do you have anything to add there?
No, I'm good.
Good, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. Really appreciate it and all the work you're doing on this for us and with us, and I look forward to continuing our efforts on this. So thank you so much. And thank you, Representative Robertson. We appreciate you participating with us here tonight and feel better.
I think it may be hard for the representative to hear, but I will say that we deeply value our partnership with all of you. And it's times like these when that partnership is perhaps spotlighted and more important than during normal times, and we intend to honor that partnership and work as hard as we can with you. This is a team effort, and we continue to look forward to work with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Senators the same. We will continue on with our regular meeting at this point, so we'll go on to transmitting of Treasury Warrants 29, 29A, 30, and 30A.
Take some motion. Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, then we'll go on to the approval of minutes from September 27, 2021. I will open it for discussion, if any.
I move that we approve the minutes of September 27, 2021.
Second.
Discussion.
For discussion, yep.
Just on page eight, the acronym, I think, needs to be changed under the Board's Consider Designating a Representative. It says MSBA. I think it should be MBTA.
Yep, you're correct.
Correct comment.
Yep. Noted. Thank you, Selectman Kyra. With that, anything further? Okay, so Selectman O'Connell, do you want to amend your?
I'll amend the motion to reflect that.
Second stands.
Okay. All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, now we will move on to appointments. Jeffrey M. Hall, Town Manager, regarding presentation of Town Manager's FY 2023 Budget.
Good evening. As part of the Town Managers Act, it is both my duty and honor to present the town's fiscal 23 operating budget. In this particular budget, as you know, essentially lays out a blueprint for the next 12 months, beginning June, July 1 of 2022, for the operating processes within the town. And this is done so not less than 90 days in advance of the annual town meeting, which is April 30 of this coming year. In addition to that, included with the information you've been provided is a five-year capital plan. This plan essentially lays out what I call the big-ticket items, everything from technology investments to vehicles, to buildings, roads, infrastructure are contained in that five-year document. Unfortunately, locally, nationally, and internationally, the world continues to confront this ongoing pandemic. The virus seems to be morphing into different variants, each presenting their own challenges to us, not only professionally, but also personally, and we continue to try to work through that. I do want to acknowledge both the Health Department employees, as well as our folks on the school side, the health services, just the challenges of the constant tracking of positive cases, of documenting that, following up, answering questions of employees, of residents, business folks, with regard to the constantly changing policies and procedures in terms of how we handle this. This is clearly taxing for them and, quite frankly, fatiguing, and I appreciate their efforts as we continue to work through this. Going forward, you'll see there's four major categories of spending here, and by order of magnitude, the biggest percentage, if you will, is the Wilmington School System. Their proposed increase, again, this year, is 2.5%. Shared costs, which include everything from insurances to debt and interest on our borrowing, is next in line, followed by general government, and then the third category is the Shawshin Tech. The cost, you'll note, is actually, the overall gross cost, if you will, increases 4.83%, but I would note that one of the things that's unusual about this particular budget is that we, in accordance with recommendations from our audit firm, this year, for the very first time, have included costs associated with PEG access, as well as ambulance services. Historically, as you know, we receive funds from Comcast and Verizon that are used to pay for the WCTV services that we rely upon so much. Historically, those funds are appropriated at town meeting. Essentially, it's a pass-through. The money comes from Comcast and Verizon. We receive the checks, and then we turn those checks over to WCTV. Our auditors are indicating that we should report that as revenue and, on the opposite side, report it as an expense. So that was $525,000 that gets added to the budget, so to speak. And then separately, ambulance services, we pay for advanced life support services through Action Ambulance. Historically, we have essentially taken the gross revenue from the billing for ambulance services, subtracted out the costs associated with ALS, and reported on the net. Again, the auditors are indicating that we should report the full amount. So unlike in prior years, we have $1,125,000 that has been added to this budget, and that's why I asterisked it there, because when you really compare apples with apples and relate our budget increase this year to previous years, the increase is 3.89%. And some of the costs associated with that increase are certainly driven by inflation. I'll note, as we get deeper into this, some of those particular costs, but inflation has certainly been, had an impact here in a number of categories. Personnel is an impact. On the general government side, we have five collective bargaining agreements that are due to expire on 6/30 of this year, so there will be salary adjustments that need to take place there. We also have a number of long-term employees who are going to be retiring, and there will be payouts associated with that. So as a consequence, we've increased our salary adjustment account by $200,000 to anticipate those additional costs. The school department similarly has the bulk of their increases associated with salary adjustments, and their increase in personnel and salary adjustments is $951,099. Separately, the Shawshin Tech assessment, we're projecting that to go up 10% or $527,215, and that's due largely to enrollment. The Middlesex Retirement System, which we are members of, every year we receive an assessment, that's going up almost 7%, $521,610. Heating oil, this is something that the Public Buildings Department is responsible for, for all of our buildings, school and town alike. The increase there is $159,650, a 19% increase, which is really extraordinary, certainly not something we've seen in recent years. The material we use for dealing with our snow and ice removal has gone up 33% just this year, which adds a cost of $87,767. And then the cost associated with recycling and trash disposal has gone up $88,955. So those are all cost drivers, if you will. On the bright side of things, or brighter side of things, one of the things that I'm happy to report is our health insurance continues to be a brighter spot, if you will. Over the last five years, it's noteworthy that our health insurance has only gone up 2.5%, and as we continue to track it month-to-month, the actual monthly expenses are falling short of the expected monthly expenses, although that gap is growing slimmer. But on that basis, we believe it's reasonable to reduce the health insurance budget by $326,950, which brings the total health insurance to $13 million, certainly still a healthy amount of money. I think the reason that we're able to do this, quite frankly, is because of the pandemic. The healthcare system has been stressed so severely that many people and employees and their dependents are not getting the elective care or the care that they would perhaps otherwise receive. And my expectation is that at a point in time when we finally turn the corner here on this pandemic, we'll see an increase as people get the care that they have been putting off. In addition, one of the other pieces here is fire overtime. We're looking to reduce that significantly by $350,000. With the individuals that have been going through the fire academy and continuing to go through the fire academy, we expect over the next several months that, once those individuals graduate, they'll be able to assume full roles and reduce our overtime. Veteran Services, we've noticed that the amount for veterans' benefits has consistently been running below $250,000. I've had a conversation with the Veteran Services Director about that, and he is comfortable with reducing that amount by 50,000, which would take it down from 300,000 to 250,000. So those are offsets to some measure. Next, in terms of revenues. Just wanted to note, in terms of this past fiscal year, one of the extraordinary issues that we, advantages, quite frankly, is our new growth. When we estimate the budget, we look at a number of factors. The property tax increase is formula-driven, it's 2.5% of the prior year amount, but then there's this component called new growth, which is a function of new homes being constructed, businesses, if they file as a certain type of business, their personal property, whether it's machines or equipment, is taxed. And we typically estimate $1.1 million in new growth, which is a fairly conservative number. This year, which is very unusual, we received over $2 million in new growth. It's clearly an outlier. A couple of consequences here, I think, are worth noting. One is that the, we had a significant amount of new equipment purchased by some businesses in town, and also a particular business changed their corporate setup, so once they did that, their personal property was subject to tax. I don't foresee that happening going forward, but clearly, new growth was a benefit to us in the current fiscal year, and that essentially is added to the number going forward. One of the other things that I think gives us reason to be cautious going forward is the developments around town. Many of you are familiar with the various housing developments that have been going on for a number of years. Many of those are winding down at this point, so the new growth we captured from them will not be sustained going forward. Motor vehicle excise is another major component of our revenue stream, and this past year was a very robust year for people buying new vehicles. As I'm sure people have seen or heard on the news, and if you go by any car lot, you'll see quite an absence of new cars, and I think it's fair to expect that the purchase of new cars is just not going to be what it was this, going forward. From what we're hearing, in some cases, just because of the supply and demand factor, people are actually paying above sticker price, and I think that is going to drive down the purchase of new vehicles, which in turn, for next year, will reduce our motor vehicle excise. So we're reducing that down from about $4.6 million down to about $4.1 million. With regard to state aid, this makes up about 12% of the town's revenue. Last year, when we were going into the budget process, we were right in the midst of COVID. The state was spending a lot of resources on trying to deal with COVID, and the thought at the time was that with all the financial resources they're deploying towards dealing with the pandemic, it was not likely they were going to be able to provide level funding even of local aid, and so we estimated that local aid would be reduced fairly dramatically. As it turned out, and certainly thanks go to the legislature and the governor, not only did we see level funding, but we actually saw a slight increase in our state... funding, but we actually saw a slight increase in our, in our state, local aid, 300, a little over $300,000. So that, this year, again, taking a more conservative approach, we're expecting level funding on local aid, but we're not anticipating any increase at this point. So then, going forward, beyond that, we get into the areas of focus. The next category is certainly education. There's no question that education is the most, one of the most important, if not the most important provision of service that the town offers. As noted earlier, the school department's increase is 2.5%. They are continuing to engage in collective bargaining with their teachers group, and there are other smaller groups that they're also bargaining with, which are going to lead to some of the costs that I talked about earlier, in terms of personnel costs. Their proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year is $45,935,465. They are looking at, at this point, adding a special education teacher and additional hours for English as a second language, learning and reading. And then beyond that, there's an increase in their non-personnel costs of about $169,000. In having conversations with Dr. Brand, Superintendent Brand, he has noted that the enrollment is declining and has continued to decline really since about 2007, for the most part. One of the things that's hard to establish a one-to-one correlation on is that correlation between declining enrollment and a declining school budget, because as many of you know, there's a lot more need for social, emotional, learning resources, one-on-one learning, and as a consequence, that adds to the mix here. But it's, my understanding, certainly Dr. Brand has indicated to us that they will be looking at their staffing situation going forward. With regard to Shawshin Tech, Shawshin Tech continues to be an appealing alternative to the high school. And as we've seen the last couple of years, the enrollments from Wilmington have gone up. It went, it was at 246, 246 students in the 2020 to 21 enrollment year. This current year, it's at 275. We anticipate it'll continue to go up. And not only does that affect the assessment, but because Wilmington's share of the overall student body is growing, that also affects the, the number. In my, some email communications with Superintendent Jackson, their budget process is not, as I understand it, fully complete, but we are estimating a 10% increase on the Shawshin Tech assessment. Then, we also want to note that the, getting into personnel, that the, as noted earlier, we have a wave of retirements that are, have been going on and continue to go on. This is, is going to be affecting our costs. We do not have any new staff planned for the non-public safety departments, but we, one of the challenges we're running into is, quite frankly, just the competition that we have with other municipalities. If you look at the MMA website for job ads, you know, many of these skilled positions, it's tough to fill. And oftentimes, there are instances where, you know, people will move on to other communities if the circumstances are, are there. So we need to be mindful of that going forward. I would also note that one of the positions that we're continuing to pursue is a planner and economic development coordinator. This position has been open for some period of time. You know, we have not been able to find a person that we believe has the right skill set for that position, will continue to pursue that. But I think it speaks to this challenge that we and other municipalities are up against. One of the things that we're looking to pursue this year is a grant writer slash grant administrator. There's been, I know there's been a discussion from several quarters about the prospect of pursuing more grants. My approach to this is to contract for these services as opposed to hire an individual. We can test the waters, so to speak, and see how this would work. The plan would be to have, whether it's an individual consultant or a company that provides these services, be able to identify grant opportunities, be able to assist with pulling the information together, and also, to some measure, the administration piece. I do believe we need to be mindful of two issues related to grant, grants, and that is that the department that's pursuing them really needs to have the bandwidth to be able to run them. Because even if we have someone writing a grant, ultimately, it's the department, the department head that is going to oversee that and needs to have the, the space to be able to do that with all their other responsibilities. The other thing I think we have to be mindful of is the long-term obligation that grants can require. For example, when we hire individuals through a grant, we need to be prepared to understand that at some point, the grant is going to run out, and we need to make sure we have the financial capability to assume that obligation when the grant expires. But I think this is, you know, worth considering and going at it from the root of hiring someone as a consultant. It provides some freedom. So, you know, if we can, if we have to reassess and it doesn't work, we can pursue another direction. With regard to capital.
Certainly, this is another key part of the budget. And, you know, as much as the operating budget is the day-to-day functioning, you know, we still need to continue to invest in, in the long-term infrastructure, vehicles, buildings. We took a deliberate effort this year to reduce, quite frankly, the amount of money that we're looking to take from free cash and capital stabilization, in part recognizing that we have some large projects on the horizon and want to make those, make resources as available as possible. Certainly, the Wildwood School, there's going to be a town meeting coming up here shortly in March, where we'll be looking for money for the feasibility study. We've got a senior center project prospect at this point, is a fall town meeting, potentially a town school admin building that would be addressed at that same time. And then the other issue that is on the radar, we still are, it's a work in progress, is a fire substation. So for all those reasons, we're trying to really be judicious with the amount that we're looking to draw from free cash at this point and capital stabilization. So getting into some of the specifics with regard to capital, we're looking at $450,000 for the third year of a three-year effort to upgrade our communication system. Essentially, this involves including a microwave system throughout various locations in Wilmington. It serves as a backup to the existing system. Certainly, we want to make sure that the first responders, police and fire that are out in the field, that they are able to maintain communication with our dispatchers and with each other. And so this will be the final phase of that part of the communication upgrade. Separately, we're looking for $45,000. And I would note on that 40, that $450,000, that is a request from free cash. The central dispatch recording system, we're looking at for $45,000. Currently, the emergency recording system and the emergency call system that we have is overseen by the state, the Emergency Communications Department. And they don't have any legal obligation to oversee or maintain our non-emergency recording system. We do happen to have our non-emergency system on, on their recording system, but we're looking to have our own standalone recording system for non-emergency calls, because sometimes calls that come in on the, on the non-emergency line turn out to be emergencies, and we sometimes will get requests for those records. So this $45,000 would ensure that we are not reliant upon the state for our non-emergency call records. We're also looking to, this would be the second year of a three-year plan to upgrade our phone system to a voice-over IP phone system. This would be for the town offices as well as the non-emergency public safety. The current system has been somewhat spotty at times. We've had some instances where the phone system has been down and we just can't have that. That's $54,000 proposed for that. The schools are requesting $400,000 in terms of capital, and they include $80,000 for replacement of the elementary school projectors, $54,000 for replacement of Wi-Fi networks in the elementary schools, $117,000 to replace computer switches in the elementary schools, $125,000 to replace projectors in the high school, and then $24,000, which is part of a multi-year effort to replace parts required for the public address systems in the early childhood, elementary and intermediate schools. With regard to the fire, we're looking to replace a, change out a, an ambulance for $350,000 to be funded through free cash. We do, trying to limit the ambulances because they're such high-demand vehicles to two years before they are put in a backup role for three or four years. So this, the current ambulance is a 2017. We're looking to purchase a new ambulance to replace that. Separately, it's not shown here, but we have the tower truck, which was purchased in 2010 for $975,000. It's in, certainly very functional, but unfortunately, there's an extensive amount of corrosion in the undercarriage of the vehicle. Some of the road, road salt has had an effect. So we're looking to spend $110,000 to have the corrosion removed and have a protective coating that will reduce, retard the amount of corrosion that takes place there on that vehicle. Certainly, as was noted, the police, we're looking for three vehicles, two frontline vehicles. And there's a whole cascading effect, if you will, that takes place with the frontline vehicles going to a secondary level, and then ultimately, they kind of phase down to, in some cases, later vehicles going to other departments that may need them. And then a, one other vehicle for the, one of the detectives would be a, not the same vehicle as, as the two frontline vehicles, but a, a smaller vehicle. $151,000 is the request there. Also, we're looking for $400,000 for warning devices at the approaches to the fire station on Church Street. This picture actually happens to be from similar devices in North Andover. Fortunately, through the efforts of our state legislative delegation, we were awarded $75,000 for the engineering and construction. It'll predominantly go towards engineering, but that's in the works now. Again, the inflationary costs have a bearing here. We were originally anticipating $350,000 for the lights. It appears now the better number is 400,000. So this would provide warning on both approaches. There's been reports of individuals trying to drive around upon the apron as police apparatus is trying to back into the bays, or in some cases, when they're coming out of the bays to get onto the road. In spite of having their lights and sirens on, people not slowing down. So we're, we don't want to risk a situation with someone getting struck by a fire apparatus. DPW, obviously, there, they've got a number of vehicles that are very critical to the town's operation, no more so now with snow possible at any time. We're looking to replace a 2006 heavy-duty 10-wheel dump truck, $202,000. 2006 heavy-duty dump truck with plow and sander for $198,000. A 2008 heavy-duty one-ton dump truck for parks and grounds for $95,000. And then we're looking also, Public Buildings has a bucket truck, which is used for replacing light fixtures and in some instances, traffic lights. The existing vehicle, there's some concern about the bed area being somewhat fatigued, and we certainly don't want to create a occupational hazard with someone being up in a bucket that has some compromised area in the back there. So we're looking to get that replaced for $147,000. Now looking at some of the more non-vehicle items. Last year, the town authorized money for engineering work on the Frank Kelly Track. You can see, I think this is a great picture because it shows some of the wear on a couple of lanes of the track there. We need to replace some of the subsurface as well as the surface of the track. The cost there is $550,000, and that's proposed for the coming fiscal year. The intersection at Shawshin Lake and Hopkins Street, the engineering on that was done, or was done this year. We're looking to replace those signals in the next year for $520,000. Also, we're looking at a long-term effort to make some upgrades to the cemetery. This includes replenishing some of the turf areas, replacing sections of fencing, and also beginning some repaving. Again, like, like I say, this is going to be a multi-year effort. It's not something that's going to happen overnight, but $40,000 is proposed for this year to pursue that. Separately, there's $40,000 that's proposed for demolition of a structure at 64 Wildwood Street. You'll recall, it was noted recently that the town is in the process of taking the property at 64 Wildwood. We've certainly made incredible efforts to work with the folks there in a cooperative manner. Unfortunately, they've been unresponsive to this point, but the intent is to have space to expand the cemetery and have additional lots. So this $40,000 would be used for removal of the buildings that are on the property. Public Buildings is another key element of our capital program, and some of the priorities here include the boilers at the Wilburn Street School. I would note that as a consequence of the work that's being done towards the Wildwood School project and the town hall and school admin, it has altered to some measure some of the work that we're proposing. The, the feasibility study that will be performed on the Wildwood School is intended to look at alternatives for how we are able to accommodate the pre-K and K. And there's been certainly discussion about consolidation of various sorts. One of the- One of the concerns, or one of these things we have to be mindful of, is if another campus is going to be used as a future site for the Wildwood, we have to be mindful of what we're spending on those facilities while at the same time making sure that they're operable and functional. The Wildwood, the Woburn Street School, the boilers in there came with the building in 1963. They've served us well, but we need to look at replacement. So the first step in that process is having the engineering to develop the specifications and determine a cost estimate. That engineering cost is $80,000. Separately from that, we're also looking at engineering services for replacement of a little over 19,000 square feet of roof at the West Intermediate School. $50,000 for those engineering services. As shown in the picture here, this is the Shawshene School. This year, we are having the engineering work done and the estimated cost to replace that roof, which is about 24,000 square feet, is $825,000. That is being proposed for capital stabilization. This is the Woburn Street Water Main Replacement Project. You'll recall, the President, President Biden authorized funding for the, this ARPA program to assist communities across the country in dealing with the consequences of COVID. One of the projects that we are looking to use those funds for is replacement of 11,000 linear feet of water line that run essentially along Woburn Street from Cajun Way down to Lowell Street. Right now, it's a 10-inch line. It's being sized as a 12-inch line on the premise that at some point in time, the town may choose to increase the amount of water coming from the MWRA and this would put the town in a position to do that. That cost is $5.5 million. Again, that would be funded through the federal ARPA money. We also are looking to use about $1 million from that program to address approximately 200 catch basins to improve the water quality runoff at locations throughout town. Some of the catch basins need to be upgraded and that would be the plan there. So here is a, really an encapsulation of the various categories of capital. You'll see in total, when you talk all the various areas that we're investing, it's over almost $7 million. Chapter 90 is state money that we receive every year. The tax levy is, of course, comes from the taxes, free cash, $1.2825,000. As I mentioned, the Shawshene roof, and then a little over $1 million coming from the With regard to long-term commitments, I think it's important that we, in spite of all these other categories and areas that we're focused on, that we continue to be focused on the town's liabilities, which include its retirement liability and our other post-employment benefits or OPEB liability. One of our focuses is to retire our retirement liability first with the premise that when we're able to do that, the funds that have been deployed for that purpose can be redirected to OPEB. But, you know, we're going to be doing a lot of borrowing here in the near term when we talk about the Wildwood School, potential senior center, potential town hall, school admin, and further down the line, a fire substation. And, you know, the bond market is competitive, just like any other market, and when we look to go out to borrow, Standard &amp; Poor's is going to want to understand that in spite of all the spending that we're doing on these large projects, that we are able to maintain reserves. Also, the folks that are looking to invest, that we want to invest in our bonds are going to want, to some measure, a security that they should invest in our bonds versus perhaps others. So to that end, we are looking to continue the practice of staying the course with our capital stabilization. We're looking to put $1 million into that category. As of 6/30 of 2021, we had a balance in there of $16,161,177. We're also looking to put $1 million into our OPEB trust fund, which as of the close of this past fiscal year, 6/30/21, we had almost $10 million in that account. And then also, we're looking to pursue paying down our retirement liability, similar to what some people do when they make advance payments on their mortgage. We're looking to put $1.5 million, again, to prepay on our retirement liability. This will be the seventh year we've done this. It'll be over $7 million that we put towards that liability and we think that, you know, these steps will put us in good stead in terms of at least maintaining our AA rating, which will be important when we have to go to the bond market. With regard to public safety, so in this category, you may recall, back in 2021, at that time, when I presented the budget, the plan had been to add four positions to the police department, two sergeants and two patrol. One of the things I find is very striking, and it was discussed in prior meetings with the Finance Committee, is that the town has had three sectors, police sectors, if you will, since the late 60s. And so when officers are out on patrol, they're typically assigned to a section of town where they patrol unless they're called on an emergency or another officer requires their assistance. Part of the effort here in going to these four additional officers would be to increase the number of sectors from three to four. Certainly, it will also help when we're able to fully staff these positions in terms of reducing overtime because there won't be as immediate a need to backfill. So initially, we, the first year, we, the town authorized funding for one sergeant and one patrol officer. Last year, given what seemed to be the potential for a very challenging fiscal year, we talked to the chief about ratcheting back the request and ultimately, we went with one sergeant for the current fiscal year. And so the plan for this coming fiscal year is to fund a, one position, a patrol officer at the current rate is 56,838, and that would be the fourth person and really fulfill that commitment. With regard to the Safer Program, as you know, a few years ago, thanks to the efforts of Chief Kavanaugh, he was able to get a little over $1.5 million in grant funding. And it was initially 75% coverage for the first two years, covering these eight individuals. And then this coming year, it's down to 35%. So the town is going to have to pick up an additional share of the salaries. We've increased the salary account by $100,000 in anticipation of that. And the other position that we're looking for, in this case, the Fire Department, we currently have one full-time senior clerk and a 19-hour-a-week part-time clerk. We're looking to discontinue the part-time position and replace it with a full-time position. This position is very involved in inspectional services and scheduling appointments, keeping records of all the various inspections that are done. It's a very important part of the program in terms of keeping the inspections up to date. And so the net impact between eliminating the part-time and adding a full-time is $19,256. This is really intended to try to illustrate to some measure, you know, the changes that we've all been grappling with. You know, I guess it's often been said, but the only constant is change and, you know, we need to be adapting to a changing environment. Quite frankly, I think the situation we've been through here over the past almost 24 months, I don't know that anyone could imagine having to adapt so quickly to changes that have been so pervasive as what we've experienced, but we are, you know, getting through it. You know, it's my hope that we are going to be able to turn the corner soon, although quite frankly, I'm not sure we'll ever really fully return to a pre-COVID environment. I suspect that COVID will become part of the white noise at some point, hopefully a much less dominant issue as to where we are now. But with all that being said, we certainly, as we've had to use Zoom and Microsoft Teams and, you know, which have certainly had certain benefits, there's no question that I think as human creatures, we need to be able to interact individually and we look, going forward, to be able to restore that to the greatest extent possible, whether it's with our recreation programs, the library, the senior center. You know, we recognize that it's important to, you know, recognizing that we have to keep our constituents and our employees safe, but we are driven to making sure we can get back to a more in-person environment going forward. At this point, to use the vernacular of the pickleball, as I conclude these remarks with regard to the budget, it's my serve, so to speak, to the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and the residents. My hope and expectation is that there'll be constructive volleys in terms of response to the information here and that ultimately, we will get to a match point, which will be a win for the town of Wilmington. Before I close, I do want to really acknowledge some of the key people that have helped me to put this all together. Certainly, Carrie Coburn-Dion, the Assistant Town Manager, HR Director, was instrumental in working with me in reviewing, I don't know how many versions of this document, but also just the general discussions about the approach to be taken. And, you know, I have to believe, although we've not talked about it in particular, where Carrie is, her retirement date is rapidly approaching. You know, it's a bit like coming around, you know, finishing the marathon and seeing the end in sight and just trying to muster the energy to make the final yards, and I appreciate her efforts. And certainly also Brian Perry, who's our Town Account and Finance Director. We've had multiple conversations, nights, weekends, you know, trying to pull all this together and really appreciate all of his time and his patience and couldn't have done it without these folks. And I would also just want to add that the department heads, as always, you know, they have been very cooperative in terms of putting together budgets that I believe are realistic. Want to thank Superintendent Brand and Paul Regiro in terms of their discussions. They've been constructive and collaborative. And so with that, I will turn it over to the board for any questions or comments.
Anybody have any?
And I would note here, just before, I guess, before we finally close, is that we wanted to include the various dates, so, you know, there's nothing like hitting the ground running. So tomorrow, we start with the Finance Committee. They'll be talking about the various general government departments, debt and interest and insurances and some of the smaller budgets, and then continue on from there. The first series of meetings in February, the first two weeks are going to be via Zoom. These meetings are always held on Tuesdays and Thursdays, starting at 7:00. Just note, we have a special town meeting, joint, well, at this point, it'll be a Finance Committee meeting to discuss the preparations for the special town meeting on March 8th. And then the annual town meeting, joint meeting is on the 15th. This is where the Planning Board and the Finance Committee get together. The Planning Board, of course, will discuss the zoning articles and that is really kind of the preview, if you will, for the articles that will appear at the town meeting. Of course, local elections on the 23rd of April, and then the 23rd of April is our annual town meeting.
30.
Thank you.
The 30th?
The 30th, rather, 30th.
Okay. Does the board have any comments, discussion for Jeff on the?
No.
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, thank you. Mr. Manager, Mr. Hall, thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate your hard work on this. As many of you know, this is our first look at this as well. We just received this budget today. I want to thank Beverly, who I know was running around and making sure this was printed off in time for tonight's meeting. Thank you, Bev. And, you know, I look forward to the opportunity to ask questions and provide input as the next couple of weeks come on. I want to thank members of the Finance Committee for what they're about to go through over the next couple of weeks. Very labor-intensive. We appreciate their hard work and I look forward to participating as much as I can with them. Just my initial reaction would be that I would imagine that a lot of residents are going to have questions about a 4.83% increase and as will I. So I look forward to that opportunity and again, I thank you for the presentation this evening.
Thank you. For the comments?
Good.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Chair, yeah, I would agree with Mr. Bendel. I am, first reaction on it, I am a bit disappointed that the increase was 4.83%, nearly 5%, when last year's was 0.43% in that ballpark, considering we're still in a pandemic type of mode here. Just looking forward to the volley, going back and forth, as you do on the pickleball court, although I don't play pickleball. And the big thing is that the residents come out the winners. Just a quick note, and I'm not really drilling down too much because I haven't had the opportunity as all of my colleagues, we just got this tonight, but just to point out on one of the pages, it showed that the police department had seven vacancies, or has currently seven vacancies, and that's why the overtime is increasing, yet you're adding on four additional, you had two last year, two more this year, and I guess I wonder why we're not concentrating on filling those vacancies. It's good that you're looking at a grant writer. I understand your apprehension with it and the needs that it goes back to the department heads for their close looksee. And just, you know, just in regards to the new track, the Frank Kelly Track, certainly it needs to be done. And I hope it meets the standards of state tournaments. I was told in the past that you needed an extra lane to get a state tournament, so if you're redoing the track, I hope you'll look at doing that. But most importantly is the protection of the track. We're spending over half a million dollars to replace it and when we used to go down there, there was a protective cover where the kids, where the student athletes would have to go over. I don't see that protective cover anymore. So, you know, when they go on to the main field, if it's a football team or soccer team, so hopefully, the school department will be aware of that to protect that beautiful track area once it's done. But I look forward to the process and I'm sure there'll be many more questions.
Me too. Anything further? Mr. Penn?
No.
Oh, okay.
It's too early in the process to commend and criticize. I do want to thank, ahead of time, all the department heads that have been racking their brains, so to speak, on, to get their numbers in line. on to get their numbers in line. And I hope they also understand that there'll be a lot of questions because this 4.8 increase is a little high. But right now, other than that, I have no comments because we just received it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to be complete, as every member has made comments. I just want to also express my gratitude to everyone involved in putting this together. I've been a part of several of these at the school and Board of Selectmen level, and it's never easy to kind of pull a compilation of information together like this. We are seeing it for the first time. Every aspect of this is important for its own respective reason. Obviously, the increase being at the 4% versus last year's 0.46. And then previously, I understand that includes the peg and ambulance. Otherwise, it would have been in the threes. Last year, it was less at the 0.46, I believe, and then previous to that was in the 3%. So I understand pandemic, inflation, cost of doing business, delays, cost of goods, services. We basically have competing needs with a limited budget. We've had development, we've had delays, there's a myriad of different things going on. We're educating our children in difficult circumstances. I'm hesitant to pull out any one thing, but some highlights that I did pull out were, I understand the million-dollar increase in the school level while having declining enrollment. I appreciate the schools being here tonight. Superintendent Brand, particularly concerned as a resident, the declining enrollment in Wilmington public schools overall. And I understand the appeal of the Shawshank Tech in private schools for a myriad of different reasons, not limited to athletics and other interests that students may have that draw them out to other environments. That is not a negative towards our school system, but it is something, being born and raised, living in the town, you know, working in the town, you know, Wilmington has a wonderful community to live in, to work in, and to raise a family and have them attend our public schools. So I would be particularly interested, over time, what some of the theories are as to why this is happening and what we can do to kind of turn that around. Something else that I thought was interesting is five out of our six collective bargaining agreements are rolling at the same time. I would be interested, and I understand contractually, we have to keep up with the date ranges that are there, but I'd be interested in our financial analyst's opinions as to how, or if there's any benefit of moving off of that type of schedule, pros and cons, such that we're not taking big financial changes at all at the same time, or perhaps there's a benefit in doing that. And then also, too, with the significant retirements that we're going to be having and paying out lump sums, it'll be interesting to see how our budget changes because you can't assume that the person that's replacing that role is going to be making at or below, potentially even making more, if they're being hired for that position, you know, new. I'm going to be relying on our Finance Committee to take a really close look at all of this. That I trust that our department heads are putting in numbers that they believe are needed, and they're passionate about why the department deserves that respective funding. So I'll be looking forward to attending the Finance Committee meetings. I receive the invitations to attend, and I intend to do that. The taxpayers ultimately will have the decision at town meeting. This is just another example as to why it's important that people come. One question that I would have is that, do we feel that with our recent PFAS issues that we've had, that anything that might be needed from the Water Department is covered in this proposed budget? And that you've double-checked that with Michael Woods and Jamie McGoldy to make sure that there isn't anything unanticipated there, that we would need some financial coverage that may need consideration? So I'm spotting you with that question, but that is something that maybe if you could jot a note and just verify that, I would appreciate it. So, once again, thank you to everyone for your efforts, and I look forward to future discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to communications.
So first, under Communications is a memo from me with regard to the new Assistant Town Manager. Susan Inman is going to be starting in that role on the 31st of January. She has served as the Assistant Town Administrator in Boxford for about 10 years. Has an Associate's Degree from the Catherine Gibbs School, a Bachelor of Arts Degree from Boston College, and a Master's in Public Administration from Suffolk University Sawyer Business School. Number of certifications in HR, her MCPPO, and has been very involved in a number of aspects of the operation in Boxford. And I think she'll be a good add to the town leadership. Also, under a memo from me to the board with regard to the Assistant Town Clerk, Megan Jones. She was, as you know, appointed as the Assistant Town Clerk. I would make one note in terms of a date here I referenced in my memo. She was actually appointed first as a Senior Clerk in June of 2021, June 14th, and not May. But she worked for the school department prior to that. And certainly, both the current Town Clerk and previous Town Clerk had very good reports on her work ethic, her attitude, her customer service, and skill set. And I think she is continuing to do a great job.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt, but on these two appointments, I would appreciate it if that, maybe at our next meeting, you invite both of them in, so we can say hello to them.
Okay. Okay, next is a memo from Valerie Gingrich, Planning and Conservation Director, regarding a proposed development at 10104 West Street. And she notes that Derek Santini, who's the owner and his consultant, LDS Consulting, we had a Zoom session back on January 12th. And there were a couple of prior sessions that we had with them, they were talking about this proposed project. Initially, it was looking to be 167 units. In the most recent version, it's been scaled down to 132 units. 54 one-bedroom, 63 two-bedroom, nine three-bedroom. It's proposed as a 40B, 25% affordable at 80% of median income. And it consists of six townhouses, 126-unit, four-story building with an underground parking garage. They are going to be filing their project eligibility letter with the Department of Housing and Community Development within the next three or four weeks. And then looking to, that, we will be made aware of that as soon as that happens. We'll have a 30-day comment period. And then they will be looking to ultimately go to the Board of Appeals as a 40B.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I feel compelled to speak on this, not directed at this particular project into the applicant in any way, shape, or form. But I do believe that part of our role here as members of this board is to educate the public as to how this came to be. And I'd like to ask the Town Manager to explain how the avenue for a proposed 40B became available to this particular developer as a result of other town endeavors that were delayed through an appeal process that provided this avenue for this applicant to certainly play within the rules, so to speak, at this point. But I think it's important how, for people to know and be reminded as to how the town is impacted by proposals that come forward in appeals and delays, and how this opens different avenues for others to explore that literally will potentially change the landscape of our town. And I think people should be educated on that.
So you'll recall that, I guess it's at least two years ago now, a year ago, probably more than a year ago, there was a discussion with Princeton Properties. They came forward looking to develop a portion of property off of Jefferson Road in North Wilmington. And that project ultimately was proposed at 108 units. And it went before the, it was, that was intended to be a friendly 40B, so-called friendly 40B. So it went through the Board of Selectmen, but ultimately was, went through the proper permitting process. Conservation was, as I recall, the last permitting agency. And since that, since it was granted its permit or approval from Conservation, there's a group in town here who has appealed the Conservation Commission approval. And as a consequence, we are now, with the new census, below the 10%, which is kind of the magic number, if you will, that opens the door for other proponents to come in and pursue 40Bs. So unfortunately, because that project has been stalled and was, were not, they were not able to obtain building permits to begin the work there, the town is now susceptible to other 40B projects.
Thank you.
Thank you. Couple of questions on this project here. One, it's nice that they've made their presentation to the Town Manager and the group that he invited into the Zoom meeting they had. But I believe that this is something, this is a large project. And I believe it's something that the residents of the town should see, too. We invited, or they were brought to us, Princeton Properties, to show us what they were planning on doing. I would strongly recommend to the board, the chair, that we invite Mr. Santini and his group in to make their presentation so that the public can see what it is that is proposed there. It's one thing to see something in writing, it's another thing to see here, sir. But to have the individuals here factually explaining what they're planning on doing, I feel very strongly that it's the best interest of the town. And as the Town Manager said, Princeton Properties has lost their 40B. And from what I understand, they're not even going to have a hearing in the courts until May. That does leave us susceptible. And there are rumors running around of other developments starting, or people looking at other properties in town. I would recommend to the board that we bring Valerie Gingrich in and the developers to show us what they actually want to do, and explain to us what they want to do. I do like to hear people talk, but I also like to see things visually. And I believe that the residents of the town would be very interested in this project, pro or con, and understand why they're going in on a 40B. I don't know if this is a hostile 40B or not. And from the way I understand it, and again, I'm just researching it, but I believe there's friendly, hostile, and then there's something in the middle. But I would recommend to the board that we sit down, we sit down with these people and have very strong discussions on what they're planning on doing. If it's a development that the town is comfortable with, we should embrace it this way that they can, the sooner that they can get their applications and they can go before the boards, the sooner we can, they can put shovels in the ground. And then the town does not have to be concerned as much regarding 40B projects. I am disappointed that the town hasn't invited them here. And I don't want to hear, well, it's not customary, I mean, we invited Princeton Properties here. This is a large project. And I'm not saying that we, if someone's going to build a house, you got to bring them before the board. But a large project like this, I believe that they should come to the board, introduce themselves, introduce their project, have a PowerPoint so that people can see it, and then make the decision. Why try to render a decision when you're not seeing what is actually happening? I mean, as far as I'm concerned, that's foolishness. That'd be like buying a car without seeing it. And I strongly believe that we should. Valerie Gingrich is our Director of Planning and Conservation. I'm under the assumption that she would have an opinion on this project. And I'm not saying that you can come up and say, oh, this project's perfect, or yes, I do support it. It has to go through all the boards, like anything else would. But if it's presented, let the residents see it, too. And let the residents make a decision on this. It's something that I think that it's time we start realizing that these big projects need to be introduced to the town, and to the town's residents, and let a decision be made. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could just note that the distinction between this project and the Princeton project, and when we started the discussions with the developer, I think the thought at that time, or my understanding, was that the prospect existed, that this would be a so-called friendly 40B. So in those circumstances, the Board of Selectmen does have a role in terms of signing off, as was the case in Princeton Property. And that's why the Princeton project came before the board, because the board ultimately had a decision there. In this case, you know, where early on, the expectation was that this might go the same route, I had been in touch with the Chair, Chair Misselli, to ask if she could participate in some of these discussions. As it, as things moved along, it appears that the decision has now been made that this is going to be a so-called conventional 40B, which, in that case, the Board of Selectmen does not have a permitting role. It will go to the Board of Appeals for review, and presumably, the other departments that would typically be involved will be able to offer comment. But ultimately, it's a Board of Appeals decision. So certainly, you know, this goes back to, I guess, a discussion that has been going on now for some time as to what projects should come before the board and what projects should not. There have been projects in the past where, you know, they have been brought before the board, and the board has, in, you know, following those sessions, been concerned about being tagged as pro or con by virtue of the fact that the proponent has simply come before them. So I certainly don't have a problem with any particular project. If the board wants to see every project that, you know, comes before, is slated to come before the Board of Appeals, we can arrange that. You know, I just need some clarity as to when projects should be brought before the board, whether, whether a factor to consider is whether the board has a permitting authority or not. If that isn't a factor to consider, then we can certainly, you know, work that, work that out.
I just want to add, just in relation to this particular project, I've been involved in the calls, and they are, excuse me, the first couple were very preliminary. When we saw the plans, and we saw better scope, detailed plans, and we shared our concerns. And there's quite a few people on the call, who's on there, Paula Looney, Valerie's on there, Mike's on there. And there's a, there's a lot of people, representation pretty much from every department in the town. The second iteration, so to speak, on the redesign, that was our first go. And in between that time is when it became, you know, unfriendly, so to speak. Not the conversation, it's just the 40B. So I don't personally feel that any of the prior meetings should have included the board just because they really were early. I don't disagree that they, you know, they can't come in here and present and all that stuff. But I don't think, to date so far, it really wasn't warranted. There would have been, it would have been too much, do you know what I mean? It was, it was quite a large meeting to begin with, and to have the whole board in there. It just, I think now, if you want to have them come and present, I think it's, it's fine. It's at a point now where, you know, they're going forward with the design. But we are at a point where we have no say in it. Do you know what I mean? Yeah, yeah.
I understand we don't have any say in it. But I just, I just feel that it would, I'd feel more comfortable with a large development than it is presented. That doesn't mean that the town, the board would have a say in it at all. I just think it would be nice if a lot, upscale project like this is presented to the Board of Selectmen by just saying, this is what we're going to build, or what we're attempting to build. And we want to present it to you. And we want the public to know what we're looking at to build there. And I'm, again, I'm not saying that you bring in someone that's going to put a two-story, a two-story, ten-unit project before the board. But on something like this, where it's such a large scale, I just believe that we have an obligation to present it to the town so that the residents can see it. Whether we have a voting authority on it or not does not make a difference, as far as I'm concerned. What I'm looking at is showing it, being open with it, and saying, this is what, you know, this is, the designer, the engineers can come in and say, or can say, this is what we're considering building here on this property. It's a large unit, a large development. And I just feel that the town, town residents have a right to see it like that. And again, not that the board is going to have a say in it. If we don't have a say in it, we don't have a say in it. But just for the presentation.
I don't disagree with you. I just wanted to bring you up to speed on our meetings to date. That our last meeting on January 12th was when they, we first saw the presentation of the new iteration. So we just saw that. It's not like we've been working on it, so I don't.
I'm not saying anybody is.
No, 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 I'm just saying, I don't have a problem with requesting them to come. I just want you to understand, it's not like we've been seeing this and meaning the same thing. It's just, this was the first time we saw it. So it wasn't even ready for presentation, is the point I was getting to, until that meeting.
That's also fine, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
And I, I understand that that's a process that has to go through. All I'm looking at is to be, bring it out to, in the forefront and say, having, having the developers and their representatives come in and say, this is what we'd like to build. Even though we don't have a say in the, on the board, at least it's a public forum where people see it, and now they can make a comment on it. Instead of having me say, oh, there's a development going up here on West Street. Gee, it looks nice. And they ask, well, how do you know? Well, I seen the presentation. Well, what about me? I'm a taxpayer in town. I didn't see anything. All I'm doing is hearing rumbles. And I, again, like I said, I'm talking a large development like this that is going to change the scope of the town up on the, in that area. And I just, I would just feel more comfortable if they had a presentation. What, what each individual selectman here on the board feels about the project is something that they can make their comments on wherever and whenever. And, but I feel that if, if you can see it, seeing is more believable. And that's all, I want to just thank you.
Okay, no problem. Mr. Bend.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually don't have really any comment on this proposed project, other than I just wanted to make a comment, since Princeton did come up. And it was during 2019 and into 2020 that I was Chair when that project was brought forward as a friendly B. And during that time, you know, we immediately brought it to the board. We thought it would be an opportunity to keep the town above ten percent threshold that we were seeking at that time. And right away, we transparently brought them before the board as a friendly B. We were able, through that process, then to negotiate the units down to one hundred and eight, next to the train station in North Wilmington, and also negotiate a donation of a quarter of a million dollars for a future fire substation through that process. Now, I totally understand that that was much different, because that was a forty B, a friendly forty B proposal. I want to err on the side of caution that, and remind my colleague that, you know, other forty Bs will go through a very public process, which we have in place, which is the regulatory process, starting with the tech review team, the planning board, Conservation, and the Board of Appeals. My frustration, quite frankly, is with the, the appeal of the Conservation and the other regulatory committees that have approved the Princeton project. And despite COVID and delaying everything else, we were unable to, the clock ran out on us on the ten percent, which is disappointing for us. I do have a question, if I could, maybe to Jeff or to Valerie. Do we know the official date in which we fell below ten percent? I would imagine that's obviously happened. So do we know the date in which we fell below ten percent?
I don't know, Valerie, do?
Yeah, sure. So once, I don't know the actual date. I can get to the actual date. But when it was a year from the issuance of the Princeton comprehensive permit by the ZBA, and they hadn't pulled the building permit, that's when we fell below the ten percent.
And, thank you.
It was about, it was either July or August of this year, or this past year.
Thank you, Valerie. And despite, and if I could just follow up, please, through you, Madam Chair.
Of course.
Is that, that's despite approval from Conservation, and despite approval from the Planning Board on that particular project.
Right, so Conservation, no Planning Board approval for the forty B, just Conservation and the ZBA.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And so I would just say that I would, from past experience and having lived through that, I want to make sure that we're really crystal clear to residents on how the process works, you know? And I'll fully admit, it took me some past experiences to live through that, to realize what it is. And we want to make sure that we're making it crystal clear to folks that if they want to propose a project themselves, if they want to learn about a project, that there is a procedure in place, and that the Board of Selectmen doesn't add another layer that may be unnecessary, and quite frankly, may not have the ability to do anything other than to complicate things, which could be frustrating for the applicant or for the residents who may be misled or confused by the fact that particular projects are coming before the board and others aren't. I think the town manager makes a good point, you know, where would it end, right? Which projects, you know, we could have, there are projects going on all the time, which is a good thing, right? We're moving forward in this world. But, you know, to what end would the Board of Selectmen would have a project in here every week, quite frankly? So, in fact, I recall in 2018, Mr. Kyra was Chair, and a proposal came forward for that exact location in Jefferson Road. And I think it was three hundred and fifty-something units were being proposed. And Mr. Kyra said, thank you, but no, thank you. And I don't want to quote you, but I think those are kind of what you said. So I'm really disappointed that the Princeton project isn't going to go through, or is going to be delayed at this point, because quite frankly, I think it was a very transparent process. There was a lot of good input from the community, and I think it was a good compromise. Although the project wasn't perfect, I was a proponent of the project. Thought we had a good compromise, including a substantial donation for a subfire station in North Wilmington. And so again, my frustration really lies with the individual who's appealed this. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Madam Chair, if I could just may add to that. I mean, my, my purpose of bringing this up was more for the education to the public of the difference of what a friendly forty B and a non-friendly forty B is, and how, you know, we may not be a voting authority on a particular project with a friendly forty B. We do have say, where in this situation, we don't. It really has nothing to do with the applicant at all, I want to be clear about that. It has to do with the process. And what I would say, just for the benefit of the public, and I would, I'm spotting the manager and even Ms. Gingrich, is, is there anything that we could have done differently as a town to have kept the original course with Princeton? You know, with, with COVID, and with court delays, and with things of that nature? You know, respectfully stated, I'm seeing the presentation in January. I know there's been some discussion, these things could go this way if the forty B, you know, for Princeton didn't go through. But I, you know, was unaware of some of the prior presentations that had been taking place even since September. You know, could we have gotten an extension on the Princeton piece? Was there anything from a COVID standpoint that had some sort of allowances for an extension? You know, I'm asking all these questions in January, because I just found out about it on January 12th or 14th. I'm trusting that everybody in Town Hall is doing their job. But I, I feel that I need to say that, you know, we did everything we could to keep all the work that was done on Princeton on track, you know, because the town had involvement. This was prior to me being on the board. That was something that this board was a part of. I feel that we have, have a responsibility to say, yes, we did everything we could. And, you know, obviously, developers have, have the ability to build based on a matter of right or a matter of a ZBA approval that's not in our purview. There's competitive landscapes, why developers don't want to bring in and show their cards from a fiduciary standpoint on their end. I don't begrudge any team or a developer from making an honest living. And it's not always appropriate for them to be public about their plans. And it's not always appropriate for the town to be public about what might be coming, because we don't want to be advertising for unfriendly forty Bs to be coming in. So I, I understand it because of the nature of the business that I happen to be in. I'm just more from an educational standpoint, saying that we are on a track, we had appeals. We should have an update on those appeals. If there was a superseding judgment from DEP, and then they appealed it again, we should know that. And, you know, is this, you know, Wilmington High School appealed two dot O, but just in a different form, on another town-approved project? And now we're having delays in costs? And, and now we're being subject to, you know, more units and, and more traffic concerns and things of that nature? So again, it has nothing to do with this applicant, but it has to do with just understanding what was in the board's purview, communications, could we have done anything differently? And is there anything that we can do going forward to, to, you know, minimize this risk?
I will say that, I just want to echo, just why I don't like using the word unfriendly. Just because we're saying unfriendly, I just want to stress, it has nothing to do with the applicant at all. And I think Valerie, maybe, Jeff, you can speak, if not, can speak to the Princeton. But we've exhausted every avenue we possibly could in that. But I don't know, Valerie, if you want to just give a quick summary on the steps to where we are today?
Sure. So as the one year, one year from issuance of the comprehensive permit was approaching, we were exploring every option, extensions, caveats, anything that we could find. We worked with our legal counsel, we worked with Princeton's legal counsel to explore all of those things. We approached the HCD, we approached all the people involved.
Valerie, yeah, yeah.
So Valerie Gingrich, Director of Planning and Conservation. An update on sort of the, the happenings with the Princeton development. As the, so, once the permit is issued from the ZBA, they have a year to pull a building permit. And if they don't pull that building permit within a year, the units no longer count towards our ten percent. So there's specific timelines that they have to meet. As that year was approaching, and there was an appeal of the order of conditions issued by the Conservation Commission, we were exploring all of our options, extensions, sort of caveats. Because of COVID, because of, this appeal was nothing to do with the comprehensive permit. We worked with our legal counsel, we worked with Princeton's legal counsel, and we explored all those options. Spoke with DHCD, and, and there, there were no exceptions or ways that it could be extended. So essentially, what happened was when they couldn't pull the building permits within that year, those units kind of fell off of our ten percent, and we went under the ten. There was a superseding order issued for the Princeton project by DEP. That superseding order issued by DEP affirmed the Conservation Commission's approval. And that was further appealed by the group of residents. So that's now playing out, and there's a hearing in May that will kind of wrap up that process. So until Princeton can pull a building permit, those units won't count towards our ten percent. So that's what makes us susceptible to other forty Bs.
Thank you. I think that's a very important piece that all just came out, was very critical, I think, to get out there to people in town. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Richard, Valerie, can you, Julia stole my question here, so Valerie answered it, then. That was great. I just want to add to Selectmen Bendel's that we also, with the Princeton Properties, had a grant for a sewer line. I don't know if you've mentioned that as well, that, that would bring sewer down into that area. And I believe, in talking with Mr. Hall, that that's still ongoing, that that, that process won't stop just because Princeton Properties is, is on a pause right now because of an appeal from residents.
That's right. And certainly, Paul can speak to this. I mean, we, we've had some delay because of costs, but Paul, can you speak to that?
Sure, yeah. So the.
Paul, maybe if you could come over here.
Thank you. Paula Looney, Town Engineer, had discussions with the folks over at the, for the, initiate the, with the Mass Works Grant, and through the state, and the EA. And they've indicated to just continue on. So I've been transparent with them, where the appeal's at. Every, I have to do a monthly report and a quarterly report. And I've kept them apprised all along, and they said, keep proceeding as you will. So we're on, currently on schedule as planned. So we haven't stopped, as far as the grant is concerned.
Just a couple more questions, if I could. This is for Valerie. Now, because of the appeal, we fall under the ten percent, and now we're subject to, susceptible to forced, normal, forty B, whatever you want to refer to it. And when we negotiated with Princeton as a friendly forty B, in, in good faith, he came down, I think, from like one hundred and twenty-five to one hundred and eight. So can he now, because we've fallen below the forty B, say, I'm going to go back up to my one hundred and twenty-five? And, to that point as well, can another developer come in? Because we know that there are some parcels of land, I think, Sharapa Farms. I remember when I was Chair, there was a developer from New Jersey that wanted to come in and put four hundred units over there. And, and I thank Mr. Bendel that I said no to that one, too. But I could have, because we had the, we had the edge on them, because we were above that ten percent level. So are we susceptible to additional developers? Or because there is a potential development on West Street for a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty units, the other developers can't come in?
So first, on Princeton's approval, they have, their comprehensive permit is for their specific project at a hundred and eight units. So they still have that approval, and they can move forward with that approval once the, the appeal is worked out, if it's, you know, in their favor. So that stands, they wouldn't be able to change the unit count without coming back and doing a revision in the process. So they would have to come back to do more units and revise their permit, go through the process again to change that. So they're at a hundred and eight unless they want to come back through the process. Are we susceptible to other development? Yes, because we're under the ten percent. The way it works is that until the, until a permit is issued by the ZBA, none of the units count. So a permit, so someone has to apply with the development, let's say it's West Street, and they're going through the ZBA process. Those units don't count until that permit is issued by the ZBA. Until that point, there can be other applications for other parcels.
Okay, so, again, because of the appeal on this friendly forty B, which would have kept us above the ten percent, and we would have been okay for another ten years, we're now, this town is now very vulnerable to other developers coming in and just putting up these massive units wherever they so see fit to put them up. And getting back to the hundred and eight, as opposed to a hundred and twenty, or a hundred and twenty-five, or whatever, we can't necessarily stop that from occurring, because we've fallen below. Isn't that, isn't that the intention of the forty B? To allow the developers to put as many as they want in that parcel of land? You know, give or take, with permission?
Right, so there's no, there's no maximum at a hundred and eight of what you can propose.
Right.
You can propose, there is an upper limit. I can't remember if it's three hundred or two fifty, but there is. there is a kind of an upper, but yeah, if you are making your, you know, parking work and your site work, you know, your stormwater work and all those components work together and you can propose more than 108 units, you can...
Right. And it, we, we wouldn't have any say in that matter at all, which is unfortunate because of this, this appeal that's been going on to, and it certainly is going to change the landscape of Wilmington, you know, and, and I don't know if the town, as Mr. DePalma said, would be comfortable with that. I would agree that there is some sense of being comfortable with developments. And, and thank you. And I would just like to know, when did, when did these discussions take place? Now, I know that Chair, Madam Chair and Mr. Hall and yourself, you were, because it says here that it was revised on January 12th, so you must have had previous conversations before it even reached the threshold of the 40B. So did they have other, were, were they proposing other development plans in that West Street property for much less or more? I, I mean, because, go ahead.
Yeah. So it was the fall sometime, I can't remember what the exact date was, was when they came in to sort of present what they were looking at. And at that point, it was 167 or maybe even more units. I, I kind of, in my brain, it's like, I forget if it was 180 something. It was, it was a lot more than we've seen in town in a project. And that was last fall, I want to say around...
The presentation said September 7th.
September, yeah.
September 7th.
So...
2021.
Thank you. So that was September. We had given them feedback that it was a very large building and a lot more units than we've seen and that we felt that folks were generally comfortable with. So they were going to go back in and look at the design and see if they could kind of tighten up the, the numbers. And that's what they then presented the last, with the last rendition.
Okay. So that presentation of the 167 units or whatever, that was in, in anticipation of us falling below the 10%?
Yes. They were...
Okay. So they were, they were preparing for...
They were aware, yeah.
Because of that appeal that residents had put forward, they were anticipating that to, to take place. Okay.
Yeah. They were aware of the falling below 10% when it happened this summer and they were, they started working on their plans after we fell below the, the 10%.
Thank you. And just to, to Madam Chair and to Manager Hall, and I understand that the entire board's not part of that process of those meetings or, and that took place when I was chair and, and Mr. Bendel was chair and so I'm sure when Judy was chair as well. But we would always send out, you know, information that a meeting took place, whether it was under confidential or in an envelope or something. So I would suggest that in the future, when you have some, these types of developments, that, that the board be communicated with, that, you know, so that we're not surprised from residents shooting off on Facebook and the community board and us saying, well, what the heck's going on? And calling the town manager and then getting a communication after the fact. So when these types of developments, we don't have to necessarily, you know, make a presentation here at, at the board, but it would be nice to get a confidential notice on it, just to be, just to be kept up to date.
Madam Chair, just, just to, we can certainly do that. They, I don't know that they can be confidential just because they're not, you know, it's not a legal matter at that point, they would be a public record, but we can certainly...
Well, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
I'm sure the public wouldn't have a problem with that either.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't hear you first.
Thank you. I just, Valerie, if I may, while you're here, I appreciate both of you jumping in the hot seat there for a minute. But in your conversations with Princeton, has there been any indication that they may rescind their generosity towards the future fire substation?
No. All conversations have been about moving forward and getting through the appeal and next steps. So there hasn't been any talk about moving backwards.
Great.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Valerie, this is directed to you, please. Can there be more than one 40 hostile? I'm using the word hostile because that's what you hear all the time, hostile 40Bs at the same time?
Yes.
Okay. There's no limit on it or, or anything? And the other question I have, I believe you just answered it, but has there been any indication that the Princeton group is getting a little tired and going to walk away from this?
That has not been the conversation.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Just, Madam Chair, if I may, just one more thing I, I wanted to mention about the Mass Works Grant aspect of it, just to be transparent with the board and where we're at and give you a really quick update. We were funded for $2.89 million, all right, that was for, for three major projects, the sewer extension project, the culvert and the roadway work. We went out to bid for the sewer on December 8th. Bids came back really high. They came in between 2.4 and $4 million. So the, we value engineered, we did some value engineering, worked with our consultants. We went out, back out to bid to try and bring those costs down more in line with what we were projecting. And the bid opening is on Wednesday, this, this coming Wednesday. And the culvert project was also fully permitted. That also went out to bid simultaneously and the bid opening for that is on February 2nd. So certainly keep the manager, town manager informed, but I just wanted to be upfront. We've let Mass Works know. My liaison at Mass Works told me, well, in the event that year over, there's a, there's a procedure you can follow to ask Secretary Canalee for additional funds and discuss why it went over. In this case, I think it had to do with the, I know it had to do with just the rising costs of materials and we're all failing it, right? And when we applied for this grant, we hadn't seen those cost increases at that time. So I just wanted to be transparent.
Thank you.
It was on my mind.
No, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any further questions, discussions on this topic? Good?
Thank you both so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is memo from me with regard to another round of cybersecurity awareness grants. This is something that John O'Neill, our IT Director, has pursued again. You'll recall, we've been in this program twice before, have been awarded the ability to do it again going forward and it's going to be geared to new hires and folks that have not previously been through the program. Then I have press release from the Mass Interlocal Insurance Association, which Wilmington is part of, for our insurance, just noting that through the efforts of our Safety Committee, we received $28,790 in insurance credits, which we can use to apply towards our premium. Good news there. This next letter is from Melissa Crane, the group program, grant program supervisor for Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs regarding our open space and recreation plan. The plan is preliminarily approved, subject to some additional information they're looking for. I know that Valerie has been in touch with them and is following up on that, but that's good news because that's good for five years through January of 2027 and it allows us to be eligible for grant funding. Next is a memo from Mike Woods, Public Works Director. Again, an update on PFOS, nothing has really changed. We are still awaiting the test results from the January 5th sampling. You know, everything is still operating according to plan, so as soon as we get a status on those new test results, we'll get an update. The next item is a memo that I prepared for the board. This is something that I'm looking to do periodically going forward now with respect to, again, part of the effort of trying to identify the challenges of working in the town hall. As you know, the senior center is slated for design and to bring forward to, to a town meeting in the fall, a town school admin building, the same. I don't think many people are aware of some of the issues that, that we deal with, so I sent out a email to departments, department heads who work in town hall and asked for their feedback on particular points to essentially, why do we need a new town hall? So these comments come from Karen Campbell, Recreation Director, and I'll just read them verbatim. "The design of the building as a school has led to many compromises to make office space. There are still low countertops, blackboards on walls, sinks with cold water only, taking up space, low stalls and sinks and restrooms and with no, no regular office amenities, quote, coat closets, electric outlets, et cetera. There are no areas within the offices for private conversations with customers, vendors and employees. Our part-time seasonal employees seek guidance and advice and periodically have issues relating to their positions. Although the three of us in the department need to be readily available to the public, most of the time it would be helpful to have space for private discussions. We do not have any onsite storage space for our program slash event equipment and supplies. Temperatures in the winter are often very cool and are always uneven. One sure way to get a surge of heat is to wear a sweater. We have had to wear finger, fingerless gloves in the office on many occasions. When our office plugs into a space heater, our side of the building loses all power. Engineering is affected every time, so we no longer even try to use additional heaters. In the summer, the air conditioning unit is so loud that we have to turn off, turn it off to take phone calls or hold conversations. The auditorium is not temperature controlled except for the ceiling fans when we hold programs or meetings in the auditorium in the summer. It can be extremely uncomfortable. We don't have any system of quick notification to another office in the event of an intruder. We do not have enough meeting space, classroom space. There have been many scheduling conflicts that necessitate, quote, bumping, end quote, our programs. This is inconvenient and unfair to our customers, although it's understandable given the importance of meetings in comparison to STEM or craft classes. The lack of space especially, is especially difficult during elections with every vote, with early voting, the lack of space is especially, I'm sorry, the, lack of space is especially difficult during early voting that preclude use of the auditorium for several weeks at a time. The only other space available in the building is a small conference room, which is too small for a program. Additional space for programming can result in increased quantity and variety of offerings by the rect department. Parking can be a problem whenever there is a large crowd, a larger event or meeting or if more than one meeting is scheduled, we have head to park at St. Dorothy's and And the next one is, I'll defer to Selectman Cara.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, through the chair. Just an update on the town school administration building. On Wednesday, January 19th, the committee met by a Zoom session with our OPM from P3, the architect from Johnson Roberts. Chairman Judge Hooper noted that the Board of Selectment accepted the recommendation of the committee with the site being located on the property of the corner of Middlesex Ave and School Street. Chairman Hooper also referenced a printout that would be included into the upcoming water bills and you all received a copy of that and the residents will get it as well. Philip O'Brien from Johnson Roberts provided a design of the building and the locations of the building. I'm just kind of synopsizing this rather than reading verbatim.
Sure.
And he designed one of the buildings up against the side of the hill and another building in front where the Swain Green portion is right up on Middlesex Ave. It was more amended by the committee that the location be up on the hillside and there was also some other suggestion that the building be taking the place of the Bazell School and start the building on that side and going across. We talked about using that upper tier as a parking area for the employees so that they could enter the building from the second floor. We also went through a diagram of office spaces, meeting rooms, storage areas for both the town and school administration. We did not really go too in-depth because the two representatives from the school department were not there. They had a school committee meeting that evening as well, Paul Rigerio, the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Jesse Finley, the school committee representative. So we didn't, we, we looked at the, the diagrams and they really came out rather nice. We also discussed about WCTV being located in the new town hall, but it was discussed that we wouldn't want a full studio as they're set up now on Waltham Street, rather than just a setup as it's, as it's diagrammed at the high school so that they can just come in and do what they need to do to provide the residents, you know, to be seen on the TV. We also discussed, which isn't in here, a community meeting room, similar to the Fourth of July building, how it's used as a community meeting room for represent, for organizations and groups. There's not enough meeting space for those groups to utilize. So we discussed maybe incorporating a community meeting room, which would be certainly separate, be part of the building, but no one would have access to the building when it was closed other than that, to that area. And that, that's pretty much it. I don't know if there's anything, Mr. Hall?
No, I think that pretty much covers it.
Thank you, Mr. Cara.
All right. Next, under Communications, a letter from the Department of Telecommunications and Cable, Susan Green, just noting that Verizon's cable license is coming up for expiration on February 25th. I've been in conversation with Carrie about this and the negotiations with Verizon are really just in, in the early stages. There's a request being put together to grant an extension, which from what I'm told has been done in other cases. So the expectation here clearly would be to seek an extension on the license renewal Next, we have Communications on, this is from William Galvin and Brad Jones and Beth Hune, with regard to the town's changes in voting precincts. We recall there was a process that the town clerk went through with the board. Those have been approved by the secretary's office. And then final item under Communications, we have an email from Kevin Stevens, who is a candidate for Eagle Scout and he is working with the Veterans Director on a project that would honor Leslie W. Wick's semen first class. He apparently was born in Somerville in 1917, resided at, on Parker Street in Wilmington for many years until his death and the intent would be to establish a memorial for Mr. Wick's and also include a granite stone and plaque detailing Mr. Wick's particulars and a memorial garden around the stone. So he, I believe, is going to be looking to come before the board to request permission to pursue that at a future meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Before we jump into board consider, we're just going to take a, a five-minute... Okay, before we jump into Board Consider, we're just going to take a five-minute break since we're two and a half hours in, just to kind of stretch, and if anybody needs to have a bio break.
I'll make a motion, and we recess for a short break.
All right. All in favor? Okay, so be right back. Quick break there. So now, we will continue on. We will go into Board to Consider.
First item under Board to Consider is the special town meeting warrant. This is, and I'll just read the article in particular, there's one article. "It is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds an amount of money to be expended under the direction of the school building committee for a feasibility study to consider replacement of the Wildwood School located at 182 Wildwood Street with a building that accommodates the existing grade configuration of pre-kindergarten and kindergarten, or a grade consolidation to include additional elementary school grades, including all costs incidental or related thereto, for which feasibility study, the town may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based upon need as determined by the MSBA. Any costs that the town incurs in connection with the feasibility study in excess of grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town or take any action related thereto."
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Unanimous. So moved.
Next, under Board to Consider is the license agreement for the Wilmington Farmer's Market. You'll recall, the board approved this at a prior meeting. Their dates of operation are the beginning on July 12th, running from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and continuing through October 2nd, with July 3rd being at the Yentile Field in the event that the July 4th events take place on the green.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Unanimous, so moved.
This next one is a Board to Consider, the request of Elizabeth Lawrenson, Town Clerk, regarding appointment of election workers. There's a whole slate of them here. I won't read all the names, but this is for the upcoming spring election.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Unanimous, so moved.
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Just a question on this, on the article, there are two, does Mr. Hull want them both signed?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Next, under, next, under Board to Consider is the Town Manager's reapportment, October 1, 2021 to September 30, 2024.
Sorry, we got caught up in signing here. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second for discussion?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We just want to hope, request through you that if at the next meeting, we could schedule the Town Manager's evaluation date.
Sure. We'll get that on the note. Schedule a Town Manager's evaluation date. Yes. Any further discussion? All in favor? So moved.
Next is a Board to Consider, the request of Elizabeth Lawrenson, Town Clerk, to execute documents relative to discontinuance of the Accu-Vote Optical Scan Tabulator. So part of the process here is when, as you recall, at the town meeting in this past year, there was 35,000 that was appropriated for replacement of the existing voting machines. Another 5,000 was authorized through funds available in one of the town clerk's accounts. So as part of the process that the secretary of the Commonwealth requires, when existing machines are removed from circulation, so to speak, they require a vote by the board. And the language, the language is in a letter that the town clerk prepared, the notice of determination, this notice of determination is pursuant to MGL Chapter 54, Section 24. The Board of Selectmen of the town of Wilmington have, by vote of their meeting on January 24, 2022, approved the discontinuance of the Accu-Vote Optical Scan Tabulator and voted to replace it with the Imagecast Precinct Tabulator, ICP Tabulator. The Imagecast Precinct Tabulator were approved, were purchased by the town pursuant to the vote on Article 7 at the annual town meeting on April 24, 2021. The, per MGL Chapter 54, Section 24, the Board of Selectmen hereby vote to use the Imagecast Precinct Tabulator at the April 23, 2022 local town elections and thereafter at all primaries, preliminary elections, and elections held in the town of Wilmington until otherwise ordered by vote of the Board of Selectmen. Said electronic voting system shall be used in the polling places designated by the Board of Selectmen. Further, the town will discontinue the use of the Accu-Vote Optical Scan Scanner effective April 2022 in any and all elections held in the town of Wilmington.
Are you looking for one motion that's inclusive of the discontinuance and commencement, or do you want them separated?
I would say they can be, one motion.
I'll make a motion as read by the manager.
Second.
All in favor? So moved.
It's actually two documents to be signed here, which we'll send around.
Is this one or two?
There's another one coming around.
Okay.
No, just break it back.
Yep. Last one.
This one needs to be signed. Needs to be signed. Actually, there was one document that was not included in the process here, so I guess the approval of Town Manager appointment, it would also require an approval of the Town Manager's contract.
I thought we did that.
I think it was an approval appointment, but not for the Town Manager's contract.
Oh, it wasn't listed here, okay. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve his contract, as written.
Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, unanimous, so moved. That's the last. Okay, so, thank you for your patience. We will now move to public comments. If anybody does have any comments, I ask you, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and ask your question. No public comments? Okay. Then we will move on to announcements. Does the board have any announcements?
Just briefly, I want to congratulate and send well wishes to Carrie Coben Dayon, our Assistant Town Manager, who is retiring before our next meeting, so I want to thank her for her service to our town and wish her well in her long, and I hope, healthy retirement.
Thank you.
And I also want to just take every opportunity we have to remind folks that March 8th is the MSBA vote for the feasibility for the new Wildwood School, and encourage everybody to attend the Shriners Auditorium. Again, the date is March 8th.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further announcements?
Just to reiterate Carrie's retirement, and thank her for her service to the town, and hope that she and her husband have a wonderful retirement together.
I think, congratulations. Okay. We will now move on to the regular new business. Does the board have any new business to discuss? No new business? Okay. So we will move on to important dates.
Important dates start with January 25th, tomorrow night, Finance Committee virtual, 7:00 p.m. FY '23 budget overview, revenues, general government. February 26th is the Senior Center Building Committee virtual, 6:00 p.m. January 27th, Finance Committee virtual, 7:00 p.m. Planning and Conservation, Building Inspector, Board of Appeals, and Board of Health. February 1st, Finance Committee virtual, 7:00 p.m. Department of Public Works, Department of Public Buildings. That is virtual. And then, February 2nd, Wildwood School Building Committee, location to be announced, 7:00 p.m. February 3rd, Finance Committee virtual, 7:00 p.m. Veteran Services, Elderly Services Commission. February 4th, last day to submit petition warrant articles for inclusion in the warrant for the annual town meeting, which is April 30 at 2022. February 8th, Finance Committee virtual, 7:00 p.m. Police Department, Public Safety, Central Dispatch, and Fire. February 9th, Senior Center Building Committee, Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 p.m. February 10th, Finance Committee virtual, 7:00 p.m. Public Library Recreation Historical Commission. February 14th, Board of Selectmen's meeting, Room 9, 7:00 p.m. February 15th, Finance Committee, Public Hearing for Special Town Meeting, Town Hall Auditorium, 7:00 p.m. February 16th, Town School Administration Building Committee meeting, Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 p.m. February 17th, Finance Committee, Room 9, 7:00 p.m. Town Clerk and IT. February 23rd, Senior Center Building Committee, Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 p.m. February 28th, Board of Selectmen's meeting, 7:00 p.m. March 1, Finance Committee, Room 9, 7:00 p.m. Wilmington Public Schools. March 3, Finance Committee, Room 9, 7:00 p.m. Shawshin Technical School District. March 8th, Special Town Meeting, Shriners Auditorium, 7:00 p.m. March 15th, Finance Committee, Planning Board, Public Hearing, Town Hall, Auditorium, 7:00 p.m. April 1, last day to register to vote in the annual election slash annual town meeting. Town Clerk's office open until 8:00 p.m.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just, I apologize for not bringing it up on a new business, but I did promise to one of the residents that I would mention it, and there's been some talk that the senior center is now closed again, and some of the seniors that I've talked to are not too happy with that, and I was just wondering why it's closed, with cases going down, why the other, all the public buildings are open, and when do you anticipate that the senior center will reopen, so that we can notify our seniors, you know, that it's gonna, it's gonna open again?
Sure.
Right, so I had a conversation with Terry Marciello last, I think it was either Thursday or Friday. She had been speaking with Shelley Newhouse, the health director, and clearly, the case numbers are going down. It was Shelley's opinion that it would be advisable to extend the closure another week and see if that trend continues, and the expectation is to reconvene at the end of the week here, and if things seem to be in the same direction, that the center would be reopened on January 31st.
So was the health department's call on that? So Shelley told her?
Well, yeah, I think they had a conversation, I think it was Shelley's recommendation, and Terry agreed that it would be advisable to give it another week, and then if things continue to be favorable to open on the 31st. I know there are some communities, I guess Tuxbury is open, some communities are not open, it, you know, I think individual communities are making their judgment calls.
Madam Chair, to that end, I also had received some calls as well, or at least one. I spoke to the manager about it, and I had received the report that he just articulated out now. If I could just kindly ask that we get an update on the 31st as to what the decision is, so that we're, you know, well aware of it prior to it being made public. Thank you.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I'll just reiterate that I also received the same call, and the residents reminded me too that the COVID cases, based on the reports given by Shelley, have gone down for four straight weeks. Just might add.
They're following it.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so now we are on to our salute service. Edward Collins, Selectmen Benno.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my privilege on behalf of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen and the residents of the town to honor Edward Collins for his service in the Army Reserve. Served honorably in the Army Reserve. Sadly, Ed passed away last week at the age of 73. Ed was a youth coach in town, he was a strong family man, he was a strong man of faith, and he was a friend to many, including myself. Our condolences to his family, and for tonight, we honor his service to our country and to our community. We salute Mr. Collins. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Collins. May he rest in peace. That will conclude our meeting.
Second.
All right, all in favor? So moved. Thank you, everybody, for your patience this evening. We appreciate it. Have a good night.